Calvin Brown, District One. Anthony Demato, District One.
Jody Sills-Gagnon, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Mary Fordier, District Three.
Town Clerk Theresa Beck.
Assistant John LaBella.
Governor Ken Kacan. Ask for a moment of silence for a true second act of duty. Thank you. Item number two.
Approval minutes of the regular city council meeting on August tenth, twenty sixteen, and the special city council meetings on August third, twenty sixteen, and August twenty-ninth, twenty sixteen.
The move?
Second.
Motion remains after the discussion. Hearing in all favor.
Aye.
High poll of motion passes. Item number three, public participation. Name your address for the record, please.
Sue.
Name your address for the record, please.
Mel Pelletier, sixty-seventh Fifth Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm the owner of Stafford Ave Roadside. We're operating on Stafford Ave until just about a week ago. We had a vision of bringing real shoreline quality seafood to Bristol. We also wanted to take mobile vending to the next level. We wanted to wow people with our service and not just your usual food truck give-and-go experience. Found a spot here in town, got all the permits and approvals and started doing business. Things were going really well for us. Then we got a visit. We couldn't have picnic tables, which we had to. Then another visit, we couldn't have banners saying that we're not open or advertise anything that we're selling. We needed to screen in our trailer, but the trailers were previously viewed and approved on two previous occasions. Then another visit saying we couldn't be plugged into the package store, Jerry's Liquors, that we were using for power. And that my box truck and the truck we used to store excess stock and all the trailers with couldn't be on the property. Although, we felt that this was of a harassing nature, we complied with these requests. Despite complying, we still received assistance assist order threatening the property owner and adding that the power and the truck issues, adding the power and the truck issues to the list of things, saying that we're actually operating a restaurant and not a mobile vending operation. So I asked, what about the things we did made us a restaurant and not a mobile vendor? Does having a table with a removable umbrella or signage that can be taken down at the end of the day not make me mobile? Does having a power cord plugged into an outlet on the outside of a building versus plugged into a noise-making including generator make me a restaurant and not mobile? Sounds kind of silly. Mind you, these things were going on in town as we, or these things are going on in town as we speak. Food trailers plugged into buildings, one at the recycling place and one at the church down the street. One of which has metal tables and chairs and a block patio for their guests, but I'm not allowed. Are these areas zoned differently? If so, then wouldn't zoning simply say, you want to do the following things, this is where you can do them, or you need to apply for a special permit to do the following things? My experience at building and zoning was, you guys come into town, this is a quote, you guys come into town wanting to do this and that, you want to do business then get a storefront. Is that any way to speak to a taxpayer or someone wanting to do business in our town? We took an empty overgrown lot full of broken glass and made it into something attractive, something people in that end of town were glad to see and supported. But I believe it's a bigger problem. Mobile vending doesn't get the town's support it needs due to two misconceptions. Food trucks take away business from other restaurants in town and that we don't financially contribute. I would say that mobile vendors work at a significant disadvantage. The weather and temperature have a significant impact on our sales. Further restricting signages and places for people to sit and eat make it even more difficult for us to give customers what they want. Easing some of these restrictions or special permitting for some could be helpful in eating in the playing field. Secondly, I live in town. My home, my trucks, my trailers are all taxed in town. We rent storage on Center Street. Our insurance company is Tracy Driscoll. Our signs were made by Bristol Sign Art. Our menus are printed by Printing Services, Inc. Our rolls come from Harvest Bakery. I would also add that we are bringing people into Bristol. Our customers came from Burlington, Southington, and Plainfield. So we do contribute financially to the town and we try and keep our money in town. I'm asking that this council be good community leaders and support small mobile business and help us find a way to succeed. And who knows, maybe be like four fifty-seven Mason and go from a food truck to a storefront here in Bristol. Wouldn't that be a nice success story? I look forward to hearing our ideas and how we can work together on the issues outlined and get reopened and serving Bristol and the surrounding area again.
Thank you.
Mr. Pelletier's account is completely false. He and his wife were advised when they first came into the building department that it was not allowed to set up a trailer unless it was mobile. Mobile means that you remove it from the site every night. It doesn't mean that you set it up and attach a permanent electrical cord to a building. He came in and requested a service drop from the street, which he was denied. The other two restaurants that he complained about, that he mentioned, have also been served cease and desist orders, as we found out that they have not been removing their trailers from the site. A lot of times we don't know if they're removing them unless someone tells us, because we're not here at night. His was blatant. They set up two trailers that you would use at a fair to sell fried dough, had a box truck there that did not move, set up tables and chairs after we told them it wasn't allowed. So he could have appealed that order to the ZBA to begin with, gone and had his case heard at the ZBA, and then changed the ordinance if he wanted to. You don't go and do it after you're told not to. We're enforcing an ordinance that's been in the books for at least the fifteen years that I've been here. And I've been enforcing this ordinance. The reason is, the intent of the zoning board was that if you wanted a small restaurant, you would go get a storefront. If you had a trailer and it was a mobile vendor, you would set up in a commercial parking lot and then leave at the day's end, then set up again the next day. It wasn't meant to have tables and chairs and awnings and all kinds of stuff like that. That's blatant. If that's what you want, then pass an ordinance to allow it. But the zoning commission's intent was that they move every night, you don't set up in a parking lot. You're not being fair to the Texas Cafe and all the other little small restaurants who have to go get building permits, have to put in a handicap bathroom, have to have a handicap ramp to get in the store. You're just going to get a trailer and set up permanently? It's not allowed. So his, and we handled him professionally right to the end, but they blatantly disobeyed the order several times.
Thank you. Dave, Councilman Proleski. Do you want to look at this under your ordinance and perhaps talk with our city planner about planning in zoning enforcement or our chief building official and then take a look at this, the ordinance? Is that your wish just for us to look at? It's me will do it. Thank you.
Your Honor, may I ask Mr. Moore a question to the chair? Mr. Moore, if a food vendor had outdoor seating but they collapsed it or took it with them at the end of the day, would that be allowable under the ordinance as it's written now?
The ordinance isn't clear that.
Okay.
Doesn't say anything, just says be mobile.
And so would the, would your office's position be that?
My interpretation would be, yeah, if they removed it, if they had several chairs and, you know, a couple of chairs and some tables and they removed them at the end of the night, that would be fine. But it's just, it's, the whole purpose is, if you want to set up permanently, you get a small storefront.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Pelletier, ordinance is going to look at it, they'll notify, or will notify you when they're having the meeting, so you're welcome to go attend, speak if you'd like.
Okay. And just for the record, I have no problem moving on a daily basis. My problem is with the power being plugged into a generator, being plugged into the side of the building. There's no difference. I can unplug and move at the end of the night. So I, you know, their major issue was what prompted the cease and desist order from, what I understand, was the being plugged into the side of the building. The tables, the signage, they can all go at the end of the night. I have no problem with that. And yes, I did do it after I was told not to, because it's already going on in town by other people. So, you know, if this is an ordinance, which again, to Mr. Moore's own point, there is nothing solidly written on this stuff. So some of this stuff is going to be made up as we go along to whoever's discretion, and it's allowed in some areas and not in some other areas.
A lot of these complaints are, a lot of these issues are complaint-driven, so I'm not saying someone complained on you, but someone says something about yours and not the other one, that's why you're addressing it.
Well, that's a public record, I believe, and I don't believe there are any complaints.
Okay, I don't know. But ordinance is looking, Councilor Proleski is the chair of the ordinance, and they will address it and someone will notify you when the meeting is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, good afternoon. Good night. Tom Lopino?
Lopino.
Name your address for the record, please.
Seven oh seven Redstone Hill Road. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council persons. I'm here because I've kind of had options. I spoke to the mayor before and I'm pretty sure you've been there since.
A couple times.
A couple times. My concern is Redstone Hill Road and the safety on the street. We've been here about forty years, my wife and I, children since we went, but, and it's a big difference. Town has changed. Thirty-five miles an hour for ninety-tenths of a mile from Food Bag to the end of the road is a hefty speed, and it's not that on the way down, I can tell you. With trucks, my wife the other day, she saw in an hour, two hours, eleven different companies, Dewey Isle, the contractor from New Britain coming through, big trucks, impossible to stop, brake brakes going down the hill, noise pollution, it's like you take your life in your hands crossing the street. The other day, I told the mayor about an incident with a couple of boys I was watching cross the street, ten, eleven years old. And they weren't looking. I never did when I was ten or eleven. Right across they go, car stops, just misses one, the other boy's not paying attention. I yell, he looks at me, he stops, a car stops. It's like, there's not much shoulder, there's no sidewalks, the sidewalks are down toward the end toward Food Bag, there's a couple of stretches of sidewalk, not that I want sidewalks. Just something else I'm going to have to take care of. But the speed, recently they put rumble strips down the side of the road. And I hope that helps, to distract the drivers, and I hope that helps for the other people that are going to have, looking for that sun. This time of the year it's brutal, it's east-west, you're looking right in the sun and you're driving, it's awful. But I'm looking for your help. The police board, I met with the police board, met with the police, they wrote a report in February twenty-fifth, I received a copy of it, it's three pages, I wish I thought of it, I could have got it to you, but the number, if you're interested, is fifteen seventy-one eighty-five. That's the police, the report number. I take issue with some of the findings in the report. Of course, these are the experts, but when I have to get my mail or I have to bring my garbage in and out and I have to look over my shoulder and it's close, I don't feel safe.
Can I ask, I don't have any information. When was that report done? I want to say a year ago.
Oh, no, two thousand and fifteen, sorry, February.
So two years ago. So what we'll do is, I mean, the chief's here, we'll ask the PD Traffic Division to take another look at the road.
Yeah, that would be good. That's what I'm looking for, I'm looking for, I'm really looking for the truck traffic. If there's any way, and I understand it's complicated, looking through the report, but they are our roads, I thought, and I thought we had some control over it, but to read this report, it appears that you have to jump through so many hurdles with the state to do it. It's not my business. I mean, the law I'm concerned about is my safety, and, I mean, forget about people parking on the street. You can't park there, find your own home. And you can't, and people haven't worked on their, it's bad. I know it's not your backyard, but it's mine.
Guys walked down that, I walked down that street, it wasn't fun to walk, so I didn't have to talk about it. But our police department, our traffic division will look at it once again, and will invite you to the meeting when we talk about it if you'd like.
I would, I would like to.
Mayor, I do have a question for Mr. Lopino.
Tom.
And I think I may have spoken to your wife.
Wife, yeah.
In the past. And I do appreciate it, because I understand that it has gotten busier there. We've got complaints from other neighbors as well, and I can't even think of the name of the street, but other streets in that area for people cutting from Seventy-two through that way instead of going down Pine Street all the way to the light. And I'm just wondering what you see on a regular basis for traffic to our recycling facilities?
Well, what I'm seeing is what I believe are the Manafort trucks, and I believe they're coming from New Britain, but I'm not sure. The brown trucks, the big brown CMP maybe, or CPM maybe, and, which, you know, I know it's a shortcut. I drove truck, I know it's, it's a news in either way, but you have West Queen Street, which comes from Route Ten, from Southington up, you've got Pine Street, which goes up, and you've got Route Seventy-two, and you have Birch, and you have Emmett to cut across, if you want to make a shortcut on it. I don't see the need, and I'm surprised Plainfield hasn't shut down some of the traffic on their Redstone Road, because it's just, it can be ugly.
It's a residential neighborhood.
It is.
It has other streets that are, to me, the commercial name roads that those trucks should be on. I don't know what we can do about it, but I'm just looking to see if you think that that's a significant part of the problem.
It is. Thank you for clarifying that, yeah.
We convinced they have sent out a letter to their haulers asking not to use that road, and we'll ask them to do it again.
They did, and they stopped for a while, slowed down, and they're right back.
And called out another letter.
Your Honor, one more thing, I got a plan on the same road. The wires, in the heat of the day, you had a wire that was hooked on a Manafort truck that was pulled down and pulled off the transformer, I believe.
Right across the wall, yeah.
Yeah, right across the wall, right across the wall, right. So, I mean, there are changes there, and, you know, we have notified the police.
And the road is getting beat very badly. I mean, there's divots all the way through.
So eventually it's a good look at.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You look pretty excited to be coming up here.
What's that?
You look pretty excited to be coming up here.
Oh, I'm just, I just, a letter of the month, Nigel Street. I'm here to compliment the Bristol Fire Department and the Bristol Police Department. People are going, wow, you know, police departments have such a bad reputation in Baltimore, Chicago. We have probably one of the best police departments of all. The reason I'm saying this, because I had an incident at my house, next to my house, September third, two o'clock in the morning, there was an officer who was doing a report down McDonald's, and he heard a blast, explosion. Well, the explosion was right next to my house, eight feet away from my house. It was a car that was on fire. We put on the suspicion origins, how it started, I don't know. And he called in nine-one-one, and Bristol Fire Department was out there within three minutes. And I had engine one, engine two, engine four, and tower one. And I want to compliment Deputy Chief Pacheco, Pacheco, for his control of the fire. The firing, the police department worked like a, it was like a ballet, it was choreographed. The fire department knew what to do, the police, the fire department knew what to do, the police department blocked the streets off, they hooked up, and the fire department saved my house from burning to the ground. Another minute or two later, it would have gone through my insulation, I had like a foil backing of insulation, it melted the siding off my house, it melted my storm windows, roof, it got as high as on my second floor, and they managed to take care of my house and the burning car at the same time. During this episode, the deputy chief thought it looked a little funny, suspicious, that's all I'm going to say, and they called in the Fire Marshal Grimaldi. He came in probably quarter to three in the morning, he was down on his hands and knees, scratching around, see what he could find with this car. And then they called in Detective Sassu and Detective Warner, and they cornered off the area, I think it was considered a crime scene. So I just want to compliment our fire department and our police department. There's probably no better department in the city, and I sleep better at night knowing that they're out there while I'm sleeping in bed, protecting the city and the property. And I also like to thank Pete Duval and Dan Holliday, because during the fire and the explosions, I was still in bed, and they came, banged on my door and get me out of bed in my pajamas, barefoot, at, you know, like twenty after two in the morning, it was about forty-five degrees. The only thing that was, one was the fire, so. So I just like to compliment them, because, you know, I was a city employee for twenty years. I know it's not easy to get compliments from people, but, you know, all city employees work as hard as they can, do what they can do to make the city better than I. I'd like to compliment Mayor Kacan, because he heard about it, and he came down just to make sure that everything in the neighborhood was fine, the neighbors were fine, we needed anything, he said, you know, the cities, any resources like he could provide to me to help me were available, so I'd just say that. And I have one other thing I'd just get off the topic just for a second. I'd like to know what is going on with O'Connell School. To me, it seems to be getting more blatant, and people are using it as a dumping area now, to dump bags and trash.
O'Connell School and Bingham have been sold to a developer, and they're working through the zoning and planning process right now. We're anticipating construction soon, but if there's garbage back there that we need to know about, let us know.
Yeah, it's right, it's right up by the old gymnasium on the backside, and there's huge potholes, and it'd be nice if they could take that and lock off Barnes Street or do something to it, because right now it's getting, we have a traffic for.
We'll check on whatever garbage is back there, but there should be construction starting soon, and they'll take care of that issue, so.
All right, so I just want to thank you for the city for their help.
Thanks for coming.
For your time. Deb Scher, Sixth Pilgrim Road. My comments are for the council regarding the statements that were given as a result of your executive session. I'd like to thank you, first of all, for your diligence in trying to work through an extremely unfortunate situation, and a situation put upon you and all of us, and we're trying to work through the constraints of a woefully inadequate charter. I do need some clarification, though, on two items, please. In the case, in this case, just exactly what does censorship mean to the situation? And secondly, Councilman Demato, first of all, congratulations on your marriage. In your reading of the council's statement regarding this issue, you stated that the mayor's actions contradict state and federal laws. Does that mean state and federal laws were broken? And if so, what are the consequences of that?
Through the chair. Some of these items I was planning to address a little bit later on the agenda, but I'll briefly take those two questions or attempt to. The first one about the censure. After much deliberation and multiple executive sessions, the council explored multiple options and determined with legal aid, legal help, that the only option we had as a council was to provide a censure, which is sort of like a parliamentary thing. It's, it's a legislative body's formal, making, making it known of a legislative body's formal displeasure with one member's actions. So that's, that's sort of what the censure was. And I said, as I, as I mentioned, I am going to talk a little bit more about this in a little while. The, the gravity of that might not feel so real to many people, but I will point out it's the first time this body has ever censured any one of its colleagues. In terms of, your second question was what, Ms. Scher?
It was stated that the mayor's actions contradict state and federal laws. Does that mean federal, state and federal laws were broken?
It's, through the chair. Yes, I'll yield to Counselor Proleski.
You know, that, we weren't, I think the comment, what was supposed to have said, may have circumvented laws. We're not in a position to say that they were broken. There's perhaps pending litigation. We're not prepared to go that far.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Louis Leonard.
Louis Leonard, fifty-one Pleasant Street. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councils. I received a letter from the Building Department. Can I, can I give you a copy of it? Sir, to Mr. Leonard, a complaint has been filed in my office regarding your property inspection revealed that you have had more than two tag sales this year, which is not allowed. You are in violation of Section VA four G two of the building Bristol zoning regulations, which state no more than two such sales per year shall be permitted on one premises. You are not allowed to have any more tag sales this year. This will be your last and final notice from our office. Any more tag sales for this year, you'll be fined ninety dollars a day. You have any questions, contact me. Sincerely yours, Monica Holliday, zoning enforcement officer. For the record, I pulled a permit. Here's my permit. And I had a tag sale. Now, I called Ms. Holliday, spoke to her on the phone, and I asked her if I can, because in other words, somebody called up and made a complaint. Who's my accusers? Can't give you that information. Okay, I get it. You don't want World War III, okay? She said she came to the tag sale, and she saw that I was conducting a tag sale, saw the signs, saw the merchandise, okay. So I asked her, did you go back to your office and see if I pulled a permit? Well, I assumed, there was the biggest mistake you'd given me, I assumed, because somebody called and made a complaint, you didn't do your job, and go back to the office, look at your book, see if I pulled a permit? Well, with that being said, she apologized to me, and, you know, I just let her know this wasn't over, I was going to address you guys all this, yada, yada, yada. I'm entitled to two a year. I plan on having another one at this weekend, the next weekend, following weekend, okay? So whether or not I'm going to be fined ninety dollars a day, we're going to see what happens.
You won't be fined.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
Just get a permit.
Excuse me?
Just get a permit.
Absolutely, absolutely, I always do. So now, with that being said, I got a suggestion that for all the signs, now, when I have my tag sales, that day, the last day of my tag sales, I go around, I pull all those signs off the poles, off of wherever I got them stuck in the ground, yada, yada, yada. I'm only making a suggestion that the landowner gets fined thirty-five dollars. If the tag sale's over, and forty-eight hours has gone by, and the tag sale police are out there, pull the sign down, find the landowner, let the landowner go find a tenant, if that's, if that's what the case is. I pull other people's signs down off the pole for months that they're up there, and it's, it's making our city look terrible. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Well, I think Plymouth has something similar to that, but we'll send it over to ordinance again and ask you to take a look at that, because it's been busy as well. Ordinance will take a look at that as well and see if it's something they want to address.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, if I may, in addition to that, there are, you know, everyone drives around town or walks around town, there are a lot of signs that people put up on poles that is graffiti, litter, blight, whatever you want, and I agree with you a hundred percent that something should be done. I see we buy houses all over the place, there's things that are signs that are there for weeks on end, so I agree, we should take a look at that and try and.
I mean, I think in all fairness, I mean, and it is fair as long as there's a fair warning out there to all the landowners, and I'm one of them, okay? Listen, Mr. Landlord or Mr. Property Owner, you're going to be fined thirty-five dollars. Now you want to, because your tenant had a tag sale, you want to go after your tenant, that's your problem. But the landowner of that address, like my house, they'll say I signed fifty-one Pleasant Street, and I should be fined if my signs are up on, you know, and it's, thirty-five dollars is more than reasonable. Because if we're paying somebody to go around checking to see whether or not I pulled a permit, at least let's get them paid. Fair enough.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Good evening, Sean Rist, Fifty-three Line Castor Road. First off, I just want to say.
First off, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making an effort to improve the city calendar, makes it a lot easier for me. Thank you, Councilor Brown, for the kind words. And it's not just a few people that are helping me, as a matter of fact, Tom Doyle Jr. is doing almost as much recording as I am, so he deserves some credit.
He needs a raise.
That's right, pay that man. Also, well, let's just cut to the, the reason why I'm here is because of some previous remarks that were made in regards to, I think, believe it was Councilman Poleski had said that we want to make sure that we're doing things right here in the city and we should ask for legal advice regarding our charter on certain items. So, at the last month's joint board meeting, there were some comments made by, I believe, John Smith, who said that if we're going to have a referendum, that somebody's going to have to get some signatures or something. So, I looked up the city charter right after Section 49, for, that says you can speak at any board or commission meeting, is Section 50, initiative, and something else that I'm not really interested in. It says in here, "Special meetings of the electors for the purpose of voting on any proper question," yada, yada, "may be called at any time by the mayor of the city or the city council." And "shall be called whenever electors, the number of ten percent of electors who are entitled to vote at the last general city election shall petition that such a meeting be called." So, I'm looking for clarification. Referendum, I heard we can't do it because of our charter, then I heard we can do it, then I heard we can do it if we get signatures.
Because I understand that the council and mayor could call a referendum, it's non-binding, but I'll leave that to my corporation council. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct. So, we can call it to go on refer, anything to go on referendum, but it would be a non-binding vote. I believe if you got the signatures, if they got the signatures, is that a binding vote?
Mayor, there are actually two different questions, two different issues. One is referendum, which is action by the public on activity that you guys have done or taken up or not taken up or whatever the grievance might be. The second is initiative, which is what Sean was just referring to. Initiative is the public starting up their own legislative proposal without the activity of the council or the mayor or anybody else. You know, I don't want to dream up an idea, but, you know, they, you know, are free to begin to petition for something, get the requisite number of signatures, and that's the way in which they would get onto the ballot. And of course, the second piece of that charter provision says that if you receive that petition and you think that it's worthy, you can certainly put it on the ballot by voting yourselves, get it on there without having to go through that whole process.
Could I help you? Yes. But it also, I'm not sure, somewhere in this paragraph, I believe it says, "Any proper question." So, does that mean if somebody was going to draft this piece of paper, could somebody make a determination as to whether or not the question is a proper question? How do we determine that? Would that be the right way to do it?
The way it has been done in the past is someone, if someone is attempting to make sure that it's done really correctly, they probably would do a draft of it, they might very well go see either the town clerk or probably our office, say, "This is the, you know, proposal we want to put forward. We're not exactly in the businesses of, you know, representing the public in that activity," but I think our practice has been to try to be of assistance. The problem with us not doing it is somebody begins the process of running around and getting their signatures on a question that wouldn't be properly certified, and that's the reference I was making to, to trying to get some advice in advance. I think if somebody was looking to draft a question, they might be prudent for them to go and seek some legal advice on how to properly pose a question. I realize that's an expense that may not be something that someone might want to incur, but if it's an item that they feel that dearly about and that strongly about, might be an appropriate way to ensure that the question is going to be valid when they submit their signatures.
Can I ask a further question?
Sure.
Attorney Corkey. Only based on months and months of listening to Sean, and I'm assuming, I'm not speaking for Sean, I would assume that he is thinking about big-ticket financial items. And because our charter addresses the finance board and the council's approval of projects and funding things and spending money, what's your opinion generally speaking about a financial item being on a referendum or initiative?
You know, I'd like the opportunity to research that a little bit and get back to you, you know, without trying to give you a knee-jerk reaction.
Okay. I'm just suggesting that I think it may be because our finance board is such a strong entity that that's why. It's not that we couldn't bring it there, but it's definitely non-binding because they're the only ones that can deal with those issues. So, it's actually other sections of the charter that may be preventing, that's just, again, I am a lawyer, but that's not a legal opinion, so don't hold me to it, but that's my thought.
Being the outspoken person that I am, I hear lots of things, and first of all, some only has a grain of truth to it, some is very true, but I heard that when the schools were going to close, there was a petition that was going around to block the closure of the schools and the building of the new schools, so that would involve a financial item as well. And I know a lot of signatures were gathered, but some of them got nallyed and I'm not sure.
I'm not sure.
In the rest of this story. Okay, so, I guess that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for public participation. Announcement, starting my referendum.
In the past, I mentioned opioid addiction here, and one of the people that we lost here in Bristol this year was one of my son Gregory's good friends, Jeff Pierce. A group of Jeff's friends have started an organization to raise funds, raise awareness, and remember their friend Jeff. The first annual Jeff Pierce Memorial Whipple Ball Tournament will be on Saturday, September 24th, at Page Park, at the softball field, starting at 9:00 AM. And I know that's mum festival weekend, and I know we are going to have plenty of other things to do, but if folks want to go out and support their activities, this is, you know, a group of millennials that are trying to start an organization and they're, you know, they came to the park board and got their permit, they got their certificate of insurance, so I'm very proud of them for trying to remember their friend. This year's proceeds will go to an organization called Shatterproof, which helps patients overcome addiction, and hopefully their organization will grow and lead to a scholarship in their friend Jeff's name. Another topic I want to talk briefly about is the Bristol Press. I don't make a habit of calling the Bristol Press every time I'm not happy with an article they publish, or I think they got something wrong, or I think they confused an issue, but I did call them last week. I spoke to both the publisher and an editor. I was letting them know that I thought their coverage of the investigation that we, as a council, have been going through for the last month or so, did a disservice to the people of Bristol. I thought it was confusing, I thought it used words that, they used words interchangeably that weren't necessarily interchangeable in any of our statements or reports. And I understand that this is a situation where we don't all have the facts, not even those of us up here have all the facts. So, it was a difficult story to report, but I called them and I told them that I thought they were confusing people, that comments online and other places, people, even tonight, someone asked me a question, and they don't have the story straight, the limited facts that we all do have. And I, you know, both men that I talked to from the press assured me that they try to get stories right and that they will try to continue to get this story right, and I hope that's true. I did tell them that I'd be speaking here tonight, and that's part of why I called them. I don't like to call people out without them knowing I'm going to do that. You know, I hope that they will, again, have more balanced coverage, and I also told them that I would tell people to look to the articles in Hartford Current for a more direct story, a story that started out at A and went to B and went to C and went to D, and tried to give you the process of what had happened here. Another topic is anonymous mail. Councilman Brown brought this up a couple meetings ago. Us up here and other folks have received anonymous letters, and it's very frustrating for us because there's nothing we can do with them. And I just want to follow up again and say that I'm very willing to talk to anybody that's sent any of us an anonymous letter. I'd like to respond to some of the things that they've said because I think, again, they have misinformation in some cases, and I'd love to have a conversation with anyone. I think I had one other thing. Oh, one other thing, the Public Works meeting this month has been canceled. For folks that pay attention to meeting schedules, I think it is posted that we're not having a Public Works meeting this month. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a great community activity going on this weekend. This Saturday at 6 o'clock at Casey Field is going to be a community softball tournament. This is a demonstration of true community because it's going to reflect the cohesive relationship that exists between Bristol's finalists, our first responders, and community groups. And it's also a benefit to help schoolchildren. The goal of the group is to fill a police cruiser type volume, a big volume unit, with backpacks and school supplies for our children. So, that's a wonderful goal, and we're hopeful that people go to watch the game, participate in the game, go there and cheer on the community groups, but also, even if you can't do that, just come down and bring something for the kids. It's a great event, and it, there's a great many of organizations and individuals who put this thing together. And I'm going to probably just name a few, but Ripley Patton will carry the ball on this, Ripley did a great job. Chief Gold, Chief Kolikowski, Sean Lennon, Jim Bellatier, John Robiski, hope I got that name correctly. The various community groups, the NAACP, the Bristol Chapter, are all participating in this excellent event, so hopefully you can go down there and support them. In addition, Saturday night, the Bristol Exchange Club. The Bristol Exchange Club is a true organization that embodies volunteerism in Bristol. They're celebrating their 75th anniversary with a dinner at the Doubletree. They're honoring another good civic leader in Susan Sedeky, who's the chief professional officer of the Main Street Community Organization. So, I want to congratulate them on all their successes, and many of us know, Mayor, you know, that the Exchange Club really stepped up this year and made sure that the mum festival exists, survives, and is going to be a very big success. So, we thank them and congratulate them. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, I've got a few announcements. Some of you have seen this hanging around town, it's mum season, okay? And it's going to expand it, and the first item on here was the Craig Morton and Scott Stevens concert, which was absolutely fabulous at Muzzy Field. It was a tremendous concert, it was well-attended, and hopefully it will be the precursor of many more. And this past weekend, Dave's been talking about flipping burgers at the Bozeninski, is that thing?
Dojenki.
Dojenki. The Polish festival. The Polish festival. Okay. So, again, lots going on this weekend, the German festival's going on, and then, of course, we start the mum festival. And I just want to read a little bit, as you've probably been reading the paper or following it all, it's been expanded from one to four days. They've added a number of events throughout the month, which I just highlighted here. The festival will be jam-packed with food trucks, vendors, a petting zoo, pony rides, carriage rides, hay rides, an adult beverage garden, an art walk, a touch-the-truck activity, carnival car show, live music with bands, and of course, a parade. There's going to be over 125 vendors. The festival runs from September 22nd through the 24th and 25th, which is the 25th is the parade. And this year's marshal, I believe, is going to be Jonathan, correct? The husky dog, okay? So, folks have put in a tremendous amount of work, they really have saved this event. I know Mark Walerysiak and his crew have done a tremendous job of going out there. And if you'd like more information, you can go to the Bristol Mum Festival Facebook page or go to the Bristol All Heart page also. And they'll list all the activities and all the things that are going on. So, again, I commend all the people that have put their heart and soul into it. They've got a large group of volunteers that have spent hours and hours and hours of work to make this whole thing come off the way that they'd like to. So, it's all going to be at the Muzzy Field, I'm sorry, at the Boulevard Field, part of Mellon Street and part of the Boulevard, it's all going to be confined to that one area, so it's going to be a tremendous thing. And again, I commend Andy Adams, Park, and all the other people who are involved.
Hometown hero.
Hometown hero, thank you, Tim. Okay? That is also going to be, let's see, Hometown Hero Breakfast is going to be this coming Sunday, the 25th. Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Eight to 11 at the Legion.
I didn't want to read the whole thing, but it's nice to have some, give me some assistance.
Who is it?
Oh, who is it? Oh, Tim, Tim Gamas? Gee.
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Oh, the hometown hero?
David Peplaw.
What's, I'm sorry.
David Peplaw.
David Peplaw. Okay, great. So, again, lots of activities, please go to the website, check it out.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, a few. Just to add to what Dave just said, there's also going to be the Miss Mum pageant back this year. After a few years off, there's going to be a mini Miss Mum, junior Miss Mum, and regular Miss Mum. That's going to be on Friday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM at Bristol Central High School. There's also going to be, after the mum festival is over, the Bristol Stomp at the Polish American Club on Saturday, the 1st, from 8:00 to 11:00 PM. And finally, I'd like to say congratulations to Councilman Anthony Tomato, who married State Representative Kara Pavilock this weekend, so congratulations on many years ahead for you.
I guess with, on that subject of getting married, there's one thing that I'd like to talk about, the Doubletree Hotel in Bristol. If some of you have not been there, I highly recommend going. Taste the food, even decide to stay there, excuse me, even for just a night, you know, even though you guys live in town, that's fine. The accommodations that are provided at the Doubletree in Bristol are bar none, or second none. We were able to have a great time, but I was just so impressed with, you know, the luxuries that were available in the city of Bristol. They really elevated the city, they really did a great job, and they represent the city very well, and I'm very proud to have had that event in the city and able to find a place that could provide what we were looking for, and the Doubletree by Hilton does that, and I'm very happy that they're here. I invite you to send me anything. You know, it is my business to look into something or to do something about, you know, if I get a phone call or something sent to me, but please sign your name. By not signing your name, you're not helping anyone, and you're sure, you're really not helping me, there's nothing that I can do. So, what gets signed by someone is my business, what isn't, isn't. So, just keep that in mind, you know, because there's nothing that I can do. And I also don't appreciate being named in a letter of something that I would or would not do. So, I'd like to say that the person in the letter, "You don't know me, okay? So, you don't know me." So, if you'd like to discuss the situation with me, I'd be more than happy to do that because that's my job. Thanks.
Yes, a few items. Of course, I want to second Councilman Gagne's congratulations to Mr. Tomato on his wedding. And I also want to second the comments of my colleagues about the importance of coming out to the mum festival, the weekend and the parade. We're all itching for something positive to celebrate, and this is the perfect time and opportunity for us all to come together and do that, so I look forward to seeing you.
We'll be hosting the legislative debates this year on Monday, October 17th, with doors opening at 5:30 PM. Right now, the debate is scheduled to actually take place from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. You'll get a chance to see Mr. Michael McCastro debate Senator Henry Martin, you'll get a chance to see Ms. Laura Bartok debate Representative Kara Pavilock, you'll get a chance to see...
You'll get a chance to see Ms. Crystal Myers debate Representative Whitbets. And you'll get a chance to see Mr. Peter Dilmastro debate Mr. Chris Ziogas. And I won't get into the politics of that. My point is only to say it's in Bristol's best interest to send the strongest delegation possible to represent us in Hartford. So please, please make sure you educate yourself on the candidates and cast your vote this upcoming November. You'll get a chance to educate yourself a little further if you attend the debate on October 17th, with doors opening at 5:30 PM. It will be taking place at St. Paul Catholic High School on Stafford Avenue here in Bristol, October 17th at St. Paul Catholic High School. Some of the misconceptions and misinformation floating out there in regards to this council's recent activity and deliberations about a report, investigative report, conducted on the mayor in relation to city employees. Referencing for the moment, the article entitled "Bristol Mayor Censured by Council After Investigation Into Relationship," posted first on the Bristol Press website on September 6th, 2016. So please bear with me. And I'm quoting from the article. "The city council unanimously voted after a two-and-a-half-hour executive session to censure Mayor Ken Cockain after a reported inappropriate relationship with a city staff member." Wrong. The report that we reviewed detailed allegations of retaliation conducted by the mayor toward a city employee. It was not about anybody's relationships. And I want to make something very clear, although it's uncomfortable to say this in a public forum, unfortunately, I'm left with no choice, which is very frustrating for me, but I want the public to understand in no uncertain terms that this council did not spend upwards of eight to 10 hours in that room talking with one another about anybody's personal relationships or anybody's sex life. That's not what this investigation was about. That's not what the Rose report was about. I'm not holding up the Rose report, I'm holding up the summary that hopefully everybody's gotten a chance to see. And it's not what the Rose report was about. So any attempts to turn this discussion toward, "Well, what happens between two consenting adults is none of anybody's business," or "What happened with a personal relationship eight years ago is nobody's business," that is not what we're discussing here. Any attempt to try and make it seem like that's what we're discussing here is an intellectually disingenuous attempt to mislead you from the facts. Do not be fooled. And I will continue. "Councilor Anthony Domato said that the mayor violated city policy and state and federal law and that he threatened another employee." Wrong again. He violated, the mayor violated city policy and state and federal law by threatening an employee and interfering with witnesses of an investigation specifically into his behavior. So it's not a matter of some laws were violated or may have been violated and the mayor threatened somebody. Those are not two separate things. That's the discussion that we're having here. So please, again, don't be misled. The article continues, this is a quote from Mr. Cockain. "I have said in the past that I don't agree with the findings," Cockain said following the decision. "I did apologize in my last two statements, and I am happy to put this behind us and continue to get to work on improving the city of Bristol." Wrong, partially. Of course, it's true that the mayor and all of the councilors want to move beyond this and get back to the work of serving the citizens of Bristol. But as much as we have a desire to do that, that does not undo the actions that have occurred, and that does not make the very serious allegations leveled against the mayor go away, unfortunately. The apologies Mr. Cockain is referencing from after our first executive session, and also the email apology that was made public first by Bristol Edition and then republished by the Bristol Press. Those apologies do not at all reference the findings of the Rose report, and that is that the mayor engaged in at least one substantive act of retaliation in threatening of city employees. That, ladies and gentlemen, is the behavior that this council unanimously takes umbrage with. That is the behavior, ladies and gentlemen, that caused this council to unanimously censure the mayor Cockain. And until the mayor can apologize for threatening and retaliating against city employees, he has not fulfilled the wishes of this council or the recommendations laid out in the Rose Another item I wanted to address from the Bristol Press article, and I'm quoting again, "Cockain had previously taken responsibility and publicly apologized for his relationship or potential relationships eight years ago." This report details instances that were investigated up to several months to several years ago. So again, trying to deflect this as something that occurred eight years ago or something that happened way, way in the past that for some mysterious reason is being brought up now is an intellectually disingenuous attempt, and it's blatantly not true. And you don't need to even see the full report to understand that. You can just review the summary that's already been made public. And I would encourage anybody that has questions to keep reviewing this summary.
I'd like to see what you say was quoted in the summary, that something happened sooner. Show me in the summary where something happened sooner, because there's nothing in the summary that calls it that.
I don't understand your question or your point.
You just said, the summary says that I did something recent, other than the comment that I made, that I did something recent. Show me in the summary where that is said.
I'm referencing your comments to...
Show me in the summary that you're referring to where it is said that something happened recently, not eight years ago. Because now you're talking about stuff that happened behind the scenes and divulging private information that the public is not privy to.
Okay, I'll circle this first paragraph that I have circled here on the summary report. The first step in remitting the situation is mayor's acknowledgement that his attempt to steer, name-redacted, away from pursuing or claiming threatening Attorney Lacy was wrong and violated Bristol's anti-retaliation policy. That's what I'm referring to.
No, you're not referring to that, you just did not refer to that.
That's exactly what I'm referring to. I'm referring to...
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And I haven't yielded before, anyway. Also, the mayor made reference in this article written by the Bristol Press that he had perhaps heard arguing coming from the executive session room. And I just want to make clear to the public that as much as perhaps this council has seemed like it was arguing in the past, or it seemed like we weren't agreeing on something, or even that there might have been animosity among us, I can tell you from being in those sessions, that we were not arguing with one another at all.
I will agree with you on that because I've never made that statement at the press.
I'll go to it. All right, fine, fine. We were all working together to try and sort through the details that were before us and come up with the best course of action. Now, Ms. Scherer earlier tonight asked some questions, spoke to that, and I already mentioned it earlier, but to anybody in the public that's feeling like they are frustrated because they can't view the whole Rose report, I apologize, I could certainly sympathize with that frustration, but as of right now, nobody on this council can read that report. Also, if you are frustrated because you feel like the council didn't do enough to discipline the mayor, or that you feel we've done too much to discipline the mayor, we were left with very limited options on what we could actually do, what we had the authority to do. And that's part of why our recommendations coming out of the most recent executive session were to look at our charter and figure out if we can come up with more concrete language to deal with elected officials in these types of situations. So I wanted to do the best that I could to set the record straight on some of these things. If anybody has any specific or particular questions that you think we might be able to answer, again, as May of my colleagues have said tonight, you can always feel free to call or email any one of us, and we can do the best that we can to share with you what is within our legal rights or authority to share with you. But really, other than what's been discussed tonight and our previous special meetings in the city council, there's not much more that we can mention. And that is it for announcements from me. Thank you.
May I just add something?
Sure.
One of the things that came out of this whole situation also was that it included all public officials, all elected officials. So if any of us were involved in anything, there's nothing in the charter that covers our actions. So we wanted to make sure that anything that was taken up covers all elected officials. I just wanted to make sure that that was added. Calvin and I know we've discussed that quite extensively, so...
Thank you.
So I wasn't planning on addressing this, but I guess now you've got to force me to. I find it interesting that I am asked to apologize for something that basically did not happen. I read Attorney Lacy's statement, and that statement is not actually true. Now, it's a he-said, she-said thing, I know that, there's no witnesses in there, and the affidavit that Attorney Lacy wrote, some of the facts are not true to what was said. So that being said, I will not apologize to something that I did not do. And there appears a problem. Attorney Lacy believes he said something, or I said something, I know what I said, and that's it. So I guess there's a statement there because there's nothing that I am going to apologize for that I did not do.
So you disagree, Your Honor, with finding A of the Rose report stated in the released summary?
I've said many times I disagree with the findings, and I disagree with the statement that Attorney Lacy gave in a sworn affidavit to Attorney Rose.
Okay. Well, the point that I was trying to underline is that this council unanimously affirmed that we believed that you should apologize for threatening and retaliating.
Good for you.
Yeah. Now we move on. Consec Calvert.
There are six items. Five A is to place on file an Empire Report for August 2016. Five B is to approve the tax refunds dated September 7th, 2016. Five C is to approve the tax assessment freeze application for MGM Investment Company LLC, Tammy and Craig Crowes, the owner of 159 Concord Street, Bristol, and rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of the single-family structure for Bristol Code Ordnance in Section 5-57. Five D is to amend Contract 2C16 to 39C, Painting with Roberish Painting Company, Incorporated, for an additional amount of $10,465 and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the amendment. Five E is to authorize the Bristol Central High School Maroon and White Committee to use the lightness of the city seal on a Bristol version of Monopoly as a fundraiser to help students in need. And I'm five F is to authorize Mayor Kenneth P. Cockain or acting mayor to sign any of all land use applications and permits necessary for construction of parking lot improvements at the Public Works facility on 95 into Kellyburg.
Motion to approve. No move.
Second.
Green sector discussion. Hearing on all favor.
Aye.
Motion passes, item six, what do you report? I'm going to refer to that.
The only one I have is the Cemetery Committee. The Cemetery Committee deals with our ancient cemeteries, and I think it's the third year in a row that we are sponsoring, I believe along with the Historical Society, a tour of West Cemetery where folks reenact people that are buried there in West Cemetery, and it's done after dark with lanterns, and you can sign up online. The Cemetery Commission has a website where you can sign up for a time slot to go do that. I've been to both the previous ones. They're really lots of fun, especially if you're into history and finding out something about some of our ancestors. And it's Friday, September 30th, at 7 o'clock at West Cemetery.
Thank you.
Mayor, I've got a couple. The ordinance committee did not meet last month, and there's a scheduled meeting next Wednesday that will be postponed. I'm going to be out of town, and we've got a couple of, I think, very important things coming up that we want to discuss. I've talked to Councilman Domato Mills. What we plan to do is have a special meeting for our next council meeting to address not only the things that are pending, but Mayor, some of the things you've sent our way tonight. The BDA downtown committee did meet. The hospital is moving along with its plans. They have more than half a dozen interested suitors, which will be their financial partners. Their representatives have indicated that they continue to meet, they continue to move forward, and that it's possible that we may find ourselves with a more formal purchase and sale agreement by month end. Otherwise, BDA has been very busy. One bit of sad news, Mayor, is that we've lost Kristin Gorski, who was a very important member of the staff, and a very important to Justin Malley. She had another job opportunity that she's decided to accept, and we wish her ever success in her career. We know she'll be very successful. The retirement board did meet, and what I want to report to you is a very, I think, which will be a very important piece of discussion that will continue through the next few years. Actuaries have suggested that we lower over the next few years gradually our expected rate of returns for our budget calculations. Very important because that shows what kind of contribution we as a city will make to our retirement board. We've unanimously voted as a board to ratchet down our expected rate of returns to be more realistic, and we'll keep you up to date on how that goes. Other than that, the retirement board is working well, and the status quo is seems to be on target, we're on target with the other projections. And Mayor, you know, you put me on the nearest council on AIDS recently, and we had a meeting this month, and one thing I want to promote is that there'll be a candlelight vigil on Federal Hill Green on October 5th, 2016. That's it, Mayor.
I thought I took you off of that for the National Council of Green.
Well, then, somebody's got to update the records there.
Can we check that a few minutes later?
Actually, there's, I think, two committees.
We'll check on it. We, yeah, we can still check. We, I think, we'll check on it.
Okay.
Yes, I've got...
Dave, was that all you had?
Sorry? He said yes. We'll make sure to have you done.
Go ahead. Thank you.
You're outside? Thank you. Got a couple. First, I'd like to call in, then swiftly, if I could, to just give us a real quick update on the fields. I know that time is getting to the point where they're going to be complete, so maybe you can give us a report. Those old legs will take you up to the podium there.
You want the short version? They're on schedule. Yes. If you drove by Bristol Central, you can see that the carpet's been laid down. They started doing all the inlays of the numbers, hash marks going tomorrow, and I think by Friday they should start putting in the infill. All the material at Bristol Eastern is delivered. Soon as they get out of there Friday, they go over to Eastern, and they're going to start laying that one out. So that's where they're at. We're pretty much still on schedule. Takes about 10 days to do the, put the carpet down, cut all the stuff in, and put the infill in. So what's left at Bristol Central is still have some bleachers and some lighting, but once Eastern is done, that's the only thing left there would be to resurface the track. So our target date is like the second or third week in October. That's our target date.
What happened to the two crews? They're going to start...
I don't know if they're going to have two crews. I think they had nine guys up there, and I think they're going to go back to the...
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yep.
Secondly, the school readiness council. It's probably reported a two-day EEC conference held on August 29th and 30th was very successful. The first day, 88 people attended from five early childhood programs, and the second day had 103 people. They provided 10 workshops, had Judy Harris-Helm, a nationally-known teacher, trainer, and author and youth investigator. The project approached early years in becoming young thinkers, presented a six-hour training to our preschool teachers and assistants. Olivia Westbrook, the kindergartner from Ivy Drive School, was a winner of the firetruck ride for the first day of school. Children had registered for kindergarten on time, had the opportunity to win the prize. It's the first time Ivy League... It's the first time Ivy, Ivy League, Ivy Drive School won. And lastly, Bristol's preschool child care center, a school readiness program, has opened their new site on Burlington Avenue, which is a former Jennings School, with classrooms for infants and toddlers preschool. With the CDC-grant childcare, child daycare, and the city of Bristol oversees, they're offering subsidized infant and toddler spaces, and the first time ever in our community. And any of you that have an opportunity to tour there, Tony, I just want to congratulate you and your family, and a wonderful job done. I had the opportunity to go through it a couple of weeks ago, and it's just a magnificent site. I guess it's going to be the poster child for daycare in the state. The next thing I have is a motion. I hereby move to grant Craig Yard permission to use a portion of Depot Square for an event honoring first responders, the police, fire, and EMS on October 2nd, 2016, provided that all insurance requirements are provided to the city. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location of the carnival on Depot Square. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council's office for insurance compliances, and I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Main second discussion. Hearing on all in favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
Okay. And the last thing I have is just a very quick report from the building committee. You may have seen something, a report that we had asked for some guidance. There is a discussion about moving, the possibility of moving City Hall to Memorial Boulevard School. You may have heard that there are some renovations that are going to be taking place at City Hall, and the, it came up to our attention that we should look at the possibility of moving City Hall. If we're going to spend the money, we should spend the money at the boulevard. So what we've asked for is just to get some, some preliminary figures as to what it would cost, if it would be feasible and prudent to do, and we're not making anything, any judgments at this time, and we certainly couldn't make anything, because you know there's already been money appropriate for Phase One, but we wanted to know what it would cost additionally if they were to include on the second and third floors. So that's all we've asked to do. I did get a report from some of the people today that they have met four or five times, and they are trying to put those figures together, and they had asked to give us some time. They had said that it might be a lot done by the end of the month, but it looks like it's going to be a little bit longer than that. But I just want to report the reason we had the meeting and what's being done from it. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Alton?
Thank you, a few things. On the Memorial Boulevard Building Committee, we are meeting with the architect still on Phase One, which includes the first floor and the theater. The architect understands that we have requested the theater to be between 750 and 800 seats, and now we have to make sure there's enough parking spaces for all of that. So that is the issue we're working on now. When that part of it is solved, we can give the architect their final orders and then get some solid numbers from the construction manager. So at this point, we still don't know any, any kind of solid numbers for Memorial Boulevard, but we are bringing along. And for the park board, the fall youth program registration is open, and classes start next week, and there is a back-to-school family movie night this Monday, Friday, at Muzzy Field, starting at 6:30. It is Jungle Book, and prior to the show, there is a special guest, the animal embassy bringing life to education.
Counselor?
You're on a no specific committee report for this month due to some cancellations that we had, but I'd like to make a couple of comments. First off, with Councilman Mills about jetting the school with regard to the Bristol preschool, the facility is absolutely beautiful. I'm sure at some point Bristol preschool will, will have their own tour for people to come, take a look at that, but the facility that was constructed for Bristol preschool is going to be used as a poster child for the state, and it is second to none. So again, it's another accomplishment that the city of Bristol has achieved, and we're, again, paving the way and setting the standard for other municipalities in the state. So I'm very proud to have worked on that project, and very proud to work with Marilyn and Shirley at Bristol preschool, and they have great facility, and it was fun to see last week the parents bring their students to meet their teachers, their preschool teachers for the first time, so that was great. Other than that, no report.
Any other motions?
That was going to be, my next question is, when you want to read them? You want me to do all of them?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to bring up quite a few motions to the floor. First, I hereby move the city of Bristol enter into a judgment by stipulation in the matter of Gloria Day Evangelical Lutheran Church Incorporated versus the Widow's Heirs Ass.
Think that he may be part of the executive, executive session?
You want to wait for that?
No.
That item didn't.
Sorry. Late, late meeting.
Didn't, it's later in the meeting. Want me to say that?
Yeah.
All right.
Read the salary.
So we'll read, we came out of the salary committee, one, two, three, four, five, six motions here. First, the salary committee unanimously recommends to city council to approve creation of a part-time, non-benefiting, non-bargaining, grant-funded position of project coordinator and experiment, excuse me, experimental educator group facilitator in youth and community services at $25 to $27 per hour, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Motion main second, discussion. Hearing on all in favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. I oppose. Motion to.
The salary committee unanimously recommends to city council to approve a 2.5% salary increase to Pine Lake Challenge Course and Adventure Program, part-time and seasonal positions in youth and community services effective January 2nd, 2017, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Motion main second, discussion. Hearing on all in favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
Thanks.
The salary committee unanimously recommends to city council to approve creation of a full-time, non-bargaining, grant-funded position of project coordinator and group facilitator in youth and community services, $51,235, starting salary with annual increases in accordance with the grant, and employee-only city-paid insurance coverage, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Motion main second, discussion. Hearing on all in favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes.
The salary committee unanimously recommends to city council to approve reclassification of the position of administrative assistant, library, non-bargaining salary level, $3.21 and 91 cents per hour to $28.42 cents per hour to a bargaining unit position in local 233, code 7, $21.18 per hour to $23.47 per hour, and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Motion main second, discussion.
I do have some discussion through the chair. While I'm excited that this position is becoming a bargaining unit position, I don't know who holds the position now, and if they're at the top of their level, this is actually a decrease in pay.
This is a vacancy, and that's why we're making a change now.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all in favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. Excellent.
Okay. The salary committee unanimously recommends to city council to approve an upgrade to the position of development grants assistant in the Bristol Development Authority, BPSA Code 5, $45,686, to $58,731 a year, to an economic development specialist position, BPSA Code 6, $50,230 to $64,576 per year, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Second.
Motion main second, discussion.
Your Honor, I do have discussion on this one as well. If I could have some explanation of the change in duties, I understand, obviously, it's an upgrade, and I understand this is also a vacant position, but I'm concerned that the grant-writing component here may get lost. In other words, I know we have a grant writer. I'm not trying to suggest that she's not doing her job, but I feel that grant writing is going to be an even more significant part of city business going forward as we face harder and harder budgets in the upcoming years, and I wouldn't want to be giving something up here in terms of having a grants assistant assisting our grants administrator.
This was a, oh, switch me, then you can jump in. You can miss what I missed. You can cover what I missed. It shows to be a lot. This was a position we started, a new position we reopened, as we started doing economic development and really going, we found that Justin needed in the system. So part of that job description was, we included grants writer, just in case. We found that we've tweaked this job duties, and it did no grant writing, and we really need to focus more on economic development, which is where this position was being, spending all this time. Justin?
That's very true, but I want to make sure you understand too, is that the way we're going to write the description is leave the door open for when grant-writing duties are required. This person will be, you know, expected to do that. It's just that over the last two years, we've learned that, you know, for various reasons, Dawn's able to handle sort of law, and that position, the focus wasn't necessarily on the grants piece, so we wanted to limit that in the new job description. But that said, I was a grant writer for years here. It's very important to me, so when those, you know, when grant writing is needed, this person will be called on to help.
Okay.
It's just less of a focus.
That's fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. You know, I want the general public to know that the salary committee gets these reclassifications and upgrades from time to time, and there's been discussion in that group that, you know, me for, for one, would love to see all this done at the same time. It's very difficult for us, I feel it's very difficult for me, to make a, a intelligent analysis of upgrades and classifications when they come in piecemeal. And that's something that we, I might, we have discussed. The personnel director said it's very difficult to do that way, but hopefully, we could probably do something better than we're doing, because it's very difficult to make judgments, I think, when we get on all of the board.
And I would just add.
Discussion.
Add further discussion on this motion, that I would second what Councilman Proleski's saying, and I do know that the BPSA local has asked for a job study that would evaluate all their positions in terms of how those positions relate to folks that do those jobs in other cities, because, again, we've just talked about two positions that are vacant in the city of Bristol. In other words, we do lose people, because other communities pay better for some of the jobs we do. And when we see upgrades for one or two positions, and I think this is the 11th one this year, it's, it's hard to, you know, see how it's okay to do a few positions at a time, when this is a bargaining unit of 50 people, and all of them are doing professional work, and all of them should be compared to their colleagues in, in other communities to have their salaries adjusted accordingly. And, you know, again, I'm not going to vote no for an adjustment upward for someone, but I think that I, I've said it numerous times, so I just have to say it again for the record that I don't think this is the way to do it.
Any other discussion? Hearing on all in favor.
Aye.
opposed, motion passes. And the last motion.
The salary committee unanimously recommends to city council to approve creation of a full-time marketing and public relations specialist position in the Bristol Development Authority, BPSA Code 6, $50,230 to $64,576 per year, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Second.
Motion main second. Before we go to discussion, just let me say that this, this job we are creating comes about by the city taking over the marketing from the chamber, which was a joint effort that we started, and it's really blossomed into something great, and we felt it's time to bring it in-house, and this just goes to show the commitment on marketing in the city of Bristol, and marketing not only what's happening in the city of Bristol, but to others around us to come to the city of Bristol. This just shows the commitment. With that, I'll say, any other, any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I have discussion. I agree with everything you said about the commitment to the, to the marketing position. However, I really feel it's important to pay the person what they're worth, and I honestly believe that this position should be $72,000 to $75,000 as an upward number on this. I think it's critical that we attract someone that's, can do the job, and do the job that is necessary to do, and having been involved with this project for five years, I know that what it entails, the time commitment that it entails, the, the number of contacts that have to be made, the work that's been done behind the scenes to create a portal, et cetera, are all things that need to be taken into consideration, and I really honestly feel that the council should suggest, or should delegate, or should, should require that this position be going back to the salary committee, and that the upward motion of this, or the upward echelon of this, I know that it's a BPSA position, but I think it needs to be at a much higher rate.
Say, and Dave, if you could jump in if you want after I do, but the salary committee discussed this position at length. We didn't take this lightly. We felt strongly according to our contracts and what the job is going to be, that this would be a good starting salary, and like we've done with other positions, once it's going, if we feel that it's, requires something else, we could always look at it and come back here and do what both council people don't want, which is adjust salary, but we feel we could get someone very qualified for this salary, and we, we felt, and we voted unanimously, that this is where we should have it. Councilman Proleski, do you have anything you might add to that?
Yeah, you know, I think part of Councilman Mills's discussion is because he's disappointed. This month, we've lost two young people who are good employees, and I think we've got to look into why. When I asked the personnel director at the salary committee how we got the range, and she said, really, it's really an educated guess. And I don't, I mean, those are my words, not hers, but it was like an educated approximation. Guess is probably the wrong word. And I think, I think we've got to do some work there, man. I'll say one of the positions, where's the second position? We lost one.
Kristen.
Kristen.
Kristen is one of the other ones, was a, was a.
We're losing Kristen.
Kristen is a great employee. I'm very sad to see her go, but that being said, you can't stop someone for, for going after a job that she has an opportunity of a lifetime. And it's a great career move for her. I wish her the best of luck. Do I wish we could have kept her? Absolutely not. If we gave her another 10 grand, we were not keeping Kristen for the job she took. So I commend any employee who looks to better themselves and looks for a career move that puts them in a place where they wouldn't be otherwise. So I, and I can't think, I don't think we could tie these two together at all.
No, Mayor, I didn't mean to. What I mean, what I want to, excuse me, what I want to say, I agree with you, because this was something that was going to improve their career. Absolutely agree with that. We talked about that.
Yeah.
We agreed. But I think we just have to be more quantitative and maybe, you know, take a look at these things, just so we know we're on target. That's my point.
Your Honor, to follow up on that through the chair, I'm thrilled to hear this conversation taking place tonight between my colleagues, but it's not an issue just in BDA, for sure. If you talk to the Water Department and Public Works and the Police Department, they'll tell you that a lot of people sort of come to Bristol as the training ground, and other communities offer better pay for equal work, and I think that we should, I would really encourage my colleagues on the salary committee to take a hard look at, at all of our employees and make sure that we're offering competitive wages in every department.
Through the chair, Councilman Brown, I got to tell you, you know, we do look at these things, and we're very serious about this stuff. No, I'm probably more fiscal conservative than others, and this is a very difficult budget year. We look at all this stuff, and what the key is, is attracting talent and being fair. We want to offer people a fair wage for a fair day's work. The problem is, there's, you know, I got, we're going to talk about this a little bit later, but the budget part of the scenario here is going to be really difficult this year. But I don't want you to think that we don't take this thing very seriously, because we have, we debate this.
And have discussion?
Yes. Again, I realize that the budget is, is a critical issue, and certainly I don't want to just go out and spend money. My point is that I think when we're creating a position, we should really analyze what is going to happen with the position, do a, a market analysis, if you would, and in this particular position, it's very difficult to do, because there are very few marketing directors for cities. And again, I think that if we have people that are doing the job and can do the job successfully, we have to be able to pay those people, and we have to realize that if we don't pay them, then they will seek other employment, and that's fine. That's their prerogative, and they can certainly do that. I don't have a problem with them doing that, and I wish everyone well. I'm just saying, if we have opportunity to attract somebody, I would think that, we're saying that this would be the top of the, of the range. We're not saying that that person has to get that. All we're saying is that then it gives the person or the director more flexibility to evaluate the person's abilities, and if they do feel that there is someone that is extremely qualified, they do qualify for this position, and that's the reason I can mention it.
Any other discussion?
Yes. I, I just, in, in, I guess, in favor of transparency, I, I think we, we have to say that our understanding initially was that this position was being created so that the person who's currently working at the Chamber of Commerce, doing the marketing for Bristol, with part of the salary being paid for by Bristol, would become a city employee. And, and part of what I think people have been getting at here is that the salary that's been recommended to us here, that person isn't going to join the city. In other words, Mark.
Volerziak.
Walereziak. Walereziak.
Walereziak. He's not willing to take that job at this salary. I'll be voting no, because I don't think we should be creating this position at all if Mark isn't going to do it. I mean, in my opinion, that's why we were doing it, to have him, the person that's been doing it for years, continue to do it for the city. And by no means am I suggesting that if we create a position, that it's guaranteed to go to someone, but this is a unique situation. As Councilman Mills said, we don't have marketing directors in cities. We're doing this partly, in my opinion, because of Mark's talent, and because of the great things he's done already, and so I'll be voting no.
Let me address that first, please. We tried coming to an agreement with Mark. I can tell you that what the city offered him was approximately $6,000 more than he makes now. I can tell you that the benefits that the city pays are extremely better than the Chamber has now, and I can tell you that he has a pension at the city that he doesn't have now. So we're probably looking at a package in excess of $15,000 more than he's making now. Now, we all think we're underpaid and deserve more pay, and that's where we have to walk the fine line as a Salary Committee and as city leaders. We have to walk that fine line between doing what is right and doing what we want to do.
I'd like to say something else, over here. I think it's important to know that the position, no matter who takes it, I think the position is important to have. And just because it came over and there's a, came over from the Chamber to the city, it's still important to have the position, because we do need to market the city. That's been established over and over again. I think the whole effort is worthwhile. My only contention is obviously to try to get an individual who, you know, had a little bit more flexibility, but I definitely would, it didn't matter who the person is, and it wasn't for one person, but the importance of the position is what I really want to stress.
Any other discussion?
Can I just say one thing, or are you?
Sorry, I'm a margin bugger. There's one thing that I've learned over the past, I don't want, maybe I'll say eight, nine years in business, is to never put all of your faith into one person. There's always going to be another person that will come around, and that is no disrespect whatsoever to Mark Walereziak, because I know him personally. He's a phenomenal person and a great person, and he does a phenomenal job, and I've been, you know, I've had the luxury to work with him on a few projects a few times, and he is, he's qualified, he's a great person, but I would never recommend putting all of your eggs into one basket, all of your faith into one person, because if you did, you'd find a lot of businesses that would be out of business, and I think that principle can apply to the city as well.
Any other discussion?
I do have just one procedurally. Councilman Mills talked about hoping that the Council would approve more money, and I don't know whether we have to amend this motion, or whether we could do a follow-up motion.
You would have to make a motion to do that. Would you want to refer?
Yeah, I would go with a motion to refer it back to the Salary Committee.
But we are in the middle of another motion, so I just.
Well, if he kids motion, we trump that motion, right? If he makes a motion to send it back.
If there's an amendment, yes, sending it back is not, is not a priority. So we would vote on the first motion, and then we would go.
Through the Chair.
Unless you want to withdraw the first motion.
Right.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Who made the motion? You want me to?
Well, here's my concern. If we send it, we're up against the clock on this position coming into City Hall. We have an extension with the Chamber through September, I believe, is that right? Through September, and we will never make, as it is now, we're probably going to be close hiring someone by that date. So pushing this back to salary and waiting till for another council meeting, we're probably looking at November, if not December, for this position. So now what do we do with two of us that are sitting there? I can tell you, I for one will not support sending it back to salary. If it gets to salary, I will not support an increase. I can't speak for the other two colleagues on salary, but I think we also have to look at the timeline that we, we're probably at 12. So if you want to amend the motion, well, who makes it? He can amend the motion, right? Dave could?
Anyone can amend the motion.
Then we vote on the amendment first.
And then you vote on the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion to have the top, the top of the salary range be $75,000.
Second discussion. Motion made, seconded. Do we, do we, I could ask Diane, do we need a, we need a classification here, don't we? For the contract level?
So I think it would require further discussion with the union, which I'm not sure that we'd be opposed to that, but the other issue is that it doesn't, that the 75 number doesn't fit into their existing salary schedule, so we'd have to have further discussion.
Does it have to be a member of the union? Or the person has to be a member of the union?
Well, I think we decided to place it in the bargaining unit, the rest of the entire department is in that bargaining unit. It just makes sense for us.
I didn't, you didn't answer my question. Does it have to be?
No, it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
But we've already discussed it with the union. I think it would be probably that safe to go back on that at this point.
I agree.
Is there a salary range somewhere in the 70s that you could illuminate us and tell us what that one is?
Well, the next step up is salary level seven, and it's 55 to 26 to 71,014.
This was the level six?
Yeah, another point just to mention, if I may, is that when we discussed the upgrade of the other vacant position and this creation of this position, I think it was, I don't want to speak for Justin, but I think it was our collective opinion that these two jobs, the economic development job as well as this marketing job, were somewhat equal in responsibilities. And so that's why we had them both slotted up at Code Six, salary level six.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Would you repeat exactly what you just said? Which two positions had similar?
The position that you just upgraded.
Right.
Which was the economic development specialist and this position.
Okay.
That we thought it was appropriate to have them at the same pay level.
Thank you.
So your motion would have to be level seven, what'd you say?
Can I ask, what is level eight?
Well, it is $60,724 to $78,087.
78,087?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Ms. Ferguson, what are other comparable jobs in that level? Can you, I know that that might be a difficult question, I don't want to set you up, but.
Eight, for eight, seven.
Yeah, what are we comparing them to?
Eight.
No, no, yeah, what's an eight?
Eight is an environmental engineer, is a deputy assessor, assistant superintendent at water, it looks like.
So you made the amendment, what level do you want to put it at?
I would put it at a level eight, please.
The motion made, do we have a second to that?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Discussion.
Your Honor, I would just say, based on this conversation from my colleagues, especially those on the ordinance. Salary, excuse me. Yes, Salary Committee, and Mr. Mills' comments, I would, I would support that. I think just from the 10,000-foot view of what the city's trying to do to promote itself, to promote the new things that are happening in town in a positive way, and to help facilitate more positive things happening, and making a solid investment such as this in a marketing position is acceptable. What I'm about to say is not in the form of a motion, but I'm offering it for my colleagues to consider and to Ms. Ferguson as well. If one might anticipate that this could cause a problem with the union.
I do.
Perhaps we could, we could make this amendment to the motion to say, pending approval from the applicable union, is that a possibility, or is that procedurally incorrect?
I think we're going to have a small ball of jazz.
I think we've discussed this, this position with the union. They were aware it was going to the Salary Committee. There was no opposition about the salary. I think they were comfortable with both positions being at the salary. We've talked about internal equity and market studies, and I do think that to put this position higher up in a Code Seven or a Code Eight opens a little bit of a Pandora's Box within the bargaining unit and other positions, as we've talked about, who want to be looked at, even within the structure of the BDA and the structure of the bargaining unit, that I think to elevate this position to that Code Eight, I believe is problematic at this time. That's my opinion.
I will, I will say that I believe that that's going to be an unhealthy working relationship in, not only in BDA, but in City Hall, and we are going to go backwards in our marketing efforts, because there's going to be nothing but resentment.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I would not approve moving it to position eight, and I do, I am in favor of leaving it at level six for two reasons. First, the Salary Committee already looked at it and looked at all of these numbers, and that's what they unanimously voted on. And second, because this is a new position, I would rather hire somebody and see where it goes. If the person gets into the position and we realize they're doing more work than that salary calls for, we can revisit it at that time, but because it's new, I'd rather start off at a lower salary, at least to begin with, and just to see where it goes.
Any other discussion? Yeah, again, I, my suggestion was a range. You can start at the low range, and again, if you're saying you can't do this, you can't go to the low range to a higher range, you're stuck in one.
Well, there is a range.
I understand that. That range can't be changed.
Not with a bargaining, it's a salary schedule.
Can it be fair to say that it would be prudent to create this position higher at the range that's already here, and give ourselves a timeline in which to review a code upgrade for this particular position?
That would be fine, but in my opinion, that's how we lost Kristen Gerson.
Kristen Gerson left for a completely different job, so that's not the true statement.
Councilman Mills, I'm not a, I'm not 100% in disagreement with you, but I think that there is, the larger point here is that it's a new position, the rarity of this position, the specialized tasks that will be required of this position, I think we need to find out what that salary would be. Now, you know, I'm not going to stop anyone from making more money, but I think that how we can do that is to give ourselves a timestamp on when to review this salary position. Again, when we have a foothold as to exactly what that description is going to be, and how that description message, excuse me, measures within BDA, because I'm not opposed to that either, but I think right now it's not necessarily appropriate, but I do empathize to a point.
Through the Chair, you know, I don't think I'd support going to the salary grade eight based on what we know. I'd rather support Mr. Mills' motion, amendment, to send it back, so we could take a good look at it. Obviously, there's disagreement here, and it's an important position, maybe we should take another, another crack at it, have a special meeting so that we don't delay things any further to have a negative impact on marketing, but that would make everybody feel better, so we can move along.
I would support that. I mean, again, I think it just requires some further discussion. We can discuss here all night long, but if it goes back to the committee and there's a special meeting that's called, and we call special meetings all the time, and I certainly think this is an important enough item, then at least go back for reconsideration, talk about it. If you come back with the same thing, I mean, I have my opinion, but everybody else, there's five, six other people that have their opinion. So certainly, if it's just referred back, have a special meeting, talk about it, and come back for the recommendation. I would agree with that.
Do we need an amendment to your amendment?
I would withdraw my motion.
Make an amendment to send it back? No, with who?
I withdraw my motion to take it to level eight. I do, I would make a motion, an amendment, to send it back to the Salary Committee to discuss the topic that we're talking about and to expedite the matter, because there is some, obviously, a matter of timing that is critical to address this as soon as possible.
Give a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor, with that being said, what is the anticipated turnaround time of said special Salary Committee meeting?
We can hold a special, as soon as we all can get this.
And said special City Council meeting?
We're probably looking at three weeks.
Right, because I also understand the urgency, so we'd have to figure out a timetable that we work with.
And I just want to say that I think we beat this to death in Salary Committee, and knowing how much discussion we put into Salary Committee, I'll be surprised if the change is coming out of Salary Committee, so I just think we're delaying a position, but we will look at it. I also want to be on the record, Dave, when the position is not filled for October 1st, don't be upset.
I totally understand. I just think that it's that important that it goes back and is discussed, and I really think that it's important that the Salary Committee be given an overview as to what exactly the position is going to require, maybe they have been already, and the importance of the position. Not that we'd re-support it, they have to know the importance of the position, and then if they make the judgment that this is where it lies, then that's fine, that's where it lies. And I really don't know if it'll take three weeks. I think, obviously, everyone's busy, but if it's, if there's an October 1st deadline to create a position, I know that it can be done before that. Obviously, you have to post a position, interview people, I understand it's going to take time to do that. But I, again, I, all I'm asking for is just a second look.
Through the Chair, just clarifying to this. No, I just declared, this position hasn't been posted yet, right?
We can't until tonight.
Until tonight.
Well, now we can't until.
All right, all right. Just want to make sure, because I would assume that the process of posting a position online, conducting all the requisite interviews, takes a while anyway.
Diane, realistically, if we pass this tonight, when are we looking to potentially have someone to hire if we found a qualified candidate?
Well, it's going to take us a while anyway, and then we're ready to post the ad tomorrow, but we'll obviously pull that, so it's going to extend that process by several weeks, I would imagine. I mean, we're going to have to advertise it, have a period of time for people to apply, and then do interviews. I mean, obviously, it's important, and we're going to do what we can to fast track it, but it's going to take time.
Do you have to list the salary? Can it just be the lower end, and is this negotiable? Did it need adding? Just put down, is the salary negotiable?
Well, it's not negotiable. I mean, it's.
Well, certainly, everything's negotiable.
It's a, I mean, when we advertise positions, we usually advertise what we're going to pay people, so.
I'm just asking.
Right.
Any other discussion? Send it back to Salary Committee, okay? All in favor? I oppose, motion passes.
Okay.
Do you want to do the motion there?
No, not yet.
And that was number 15, number 15.
Correct.
What do we have, committee members?
Yes, quickly, some exciting news from Youth and Community Services. The Bristol Prevention Coalition for a drug-free community is excited to announce a five-year grant award to prevent youth substance abuse, funded by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And minister through the city of Bristol, the federal grant totals $1,025,000 a year. As a primary resource for substance abuse prevention in the Bristol community, the Coalition's 2016 to 2017 action plan will address alcohol and marijuana use among sixth through 12th grade Bristol students. Earlier this year, the Coalition decided to focus on these two substances after analyzing current data and taking into consideration local conditions in the Bristol community. The Coalition will ensure progress is being made in its efforts and in its action plan by continuously analyzing data and updating strategies throughout the course of the five-year grant. So I want to congratulate Eileen McNulty and everybody involved in the Coalition for their great work in securing this grant. And if anybody has, quickly from the library. The main library and Man Ross Library are gathering up with fall programs for all ages. Storytimes, book discussions, movies, and music are just some of the offerings that are planned. The library will be hosting singer and Sinatra stylist Tony Castle performing the music of Sinatra, rap pack Neil Diamond, and more, at a special mum festival edition of the Library Coffee House on Tuesday, September 20th, at 6:30 PM at the Bristol Public Library. There is no charge for that event, but if you would RSVP to the library by giving them a call, that would be perfect. And that's it for committee reports. Do you want me to do the motion now? Okay, so I stand corrected. I have one more item, and that's from the Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption. Previous meetings, we've discussed the Solarized Bristol program and how that's going to get underway to try and encourage Bristol residents who might be interested in exploring solar power as an option. There will be some resources and opportunities for residents to pursue that if they're interested in partnership with the Solarized Bristol program through the city. So I have a motion hereby move that the Seal of the city of Bristol be authorized for use by Smart Power in connection with the Solarized Bristol program to inform Bristol residents of the program.
And Your Honor, can I ask for an amendment on that? That it be the likeness of the seal? It's not the actual seal that people use, it's the likeness, the image.
Very good. I amend the motion to read "the likeness of the seal."
We have a second.
Second.
We'll wait, second discussion. Hearing on all favor. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. Unfinished business, time for further.
And Your Honor, just before we go on, the last motion, I don't mean to beat it in horse, but it was an amendment, and so we never voted on the actual motion, which was the creation of the position, so.
So do we have to? So do we have to?
Yeah. So you vote on the amendment, and then you have to vote on the actual motion with the amendment, which is to remove.
So a no vote would be because we're sending it back to salary?
Well, actually, it's an amendment to that previous one, so really, I guess the amendment that you'd probably want to craft would be to amend it to say that you're not going to create it, that you're going to send it back. So you could conceivably, yes, amend it so that you're not creating the position yet.
What's the motion?
You just tabled the motion?
You know what your instructions are.
Can I move to table it?
Make the table second.
You can, that would work.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? I oppose, motion passes. Thank you. Unfinished business, starting from front.
No, none for me, your honor.
None, your honor?
None.
None?
None.
I have one item. I would ask Mrs. Ferguson to come up again. I'm sorry, I would have told you not to sit down, if I remember. What I'm interested in is, I'm interested in a follow-up on the recommendations that the council made in conjunction with our executive sessions and our center. We made, I think it's four or five recommendations based on the Rose Report, and I just want to, again, in favor of transparency, ask where we're at with those recommendations. And if you don't have them in front of you, I do have the copy of the Rose Report, if you want to use it.
I don't.
Just an update, I guess, for the public, I guess, then for council, as to where we're at with those.
So I believe the mayor addressed item A today. He addressed it a couple times before. That's not part of my responsibility. Item B has been established, which is the ombudsman protocol. C, we are in the works of scheduling some training. Kane and Iskler and McHale suggested we use a different law firm. So we're in the midst of finding a suitable law firm to do that training.
Recommended that you find a different.
Our current labor attorney suggested that it would be best if we just use an independent party to do that training.
Okay. Have we had a protocol for that training in the past? Like, have we done sexual harassment training for supervisors, and have we others?
We just did it this spring. We do it for all new supervisors, and then we do it periodically.
And what's the period generally? I mean, is it every five years? Is it every?
There's no requirement. The requirement's for new supervisors. I think the, I think the last time we did it, aside from the spring, was maybe three or four years ago.
Okay. And is council going to be included with this?
I think that's your recommendation.
Right. So do you have any, you know, rough idea of when that might be? I mean, is it going to be by the end of the year? Is it going to be next spring?
I was hoping to do that by the end of the year, hopefully late October, November.
Okay.
The sick time has been restored, and the EAP has been completed.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ferguson, before you sit down, not to be dense, but you mentioned that the mayor has addressed the first point, the acknowledgement of wrongdoing and threatening Attorney Lacy and the employee. And specifically, I'll read from the Rose Report. Unless he, the mayor, can sincerely recognize the errors involved, the toxin will permeate throughout the city of Bristol, and the city council will be forced to evaluate its legal obligations to manage or discipline the mayor. Are you suggesting that we're at a stalemate that will force this council to evaluate our legal obligations?
I'm not suggesting anything. I mean, item A has nothing to do with me. I was not asked to do anything on it, and I fulfilled the obligations that I thought I was directed to comply with.
Okay, understood.
Another discussion. New business, starting from front.
Sorry, new business.
None for me, thank you.
Mayor, I got a couple, please. Last week, Senator Farah, who was the co-chair of the Senate Budget Committee in Hyatt, was in town, and he said something that I want to just relate to all of us here that really disturbed me a little bit. He said that the state hasn't bottomed out yet in terms of the revenue deductions, which scared me a little bit in a very difficult budget year. Mr. Clack and I had an extended conversation today, because I asked Glenn what he knew, if there's any trickle-down. And I know Glenn's on top of that part of it, right? But what it made me think of, and I talked with Chairperson Tibo this afternoon, that, you know, we've got to do some strategic planning, I think, in terms of budget modeling. You've got to start sooner than later. And I know the session won't start, but I think we've got to do, you know, it's an election, yeah? I know you'll be all over this. We over what the election. That's a joke. The, I know the plan is to start sooner, I hope to do. The second thing is, again, with Chairperson Tibo, she promised to call me, because I'd like to go to the next board of finance meeting. We've talked about having a meeting between Mr. Clacko, Chairman Tibo, you and me, and whoever else, about an audit plan for procedures and routines, and she's going to, I think, refer that to her banking and audit committee, subcommittee. I'm really hopeful that this is a bipartisan or nonpartisan approach. I've got some ideas of where I think we should start. We'll share that with the committee, with the membership here, but I'm hopeful that we get that thing, at least we take a look at it, very soon, maybe by next month.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
No?
None.
None, your honor.
A question, I didn't know when else to bring this up, so I save it for new business. Not that it's a stress, stressing or urgent matter, but do these, are these meetings no longer broadcast live?
Today's, tonight is not an issue. Just tonight's is not.
Just tonight's, all right, but it's not, it's not a policy moving forward.
They've changed their cameras, the cameras, I guess, they changed their cameras. The new cameras will be coming in next week.
Okay, no, that's all, I know.
Yeah, next month will be live.
Sure, sure. I just didn't know if it was a policy change or something.
Nope.
That's fine, that's all I had.
Thank you. Resignations.
There are no resignations, your honor.
Appointments. In the weapons commission, mayor's appointment to reappoint Tracy Girl, alternate member for your term to 9/19. Youth commission to reappoint Raymond Decker, section two-nine resignation, non-expired term to eight, to six, eighteen. In a effort to allow others to be acting mayor, this month I am going to appoint Tony Damato to be acting mayor. Thank you, your honor. Item number eleven. Mayor, before we move on, can we, if there is an appointment of a new person on a new board, can we make it standard operating procedure to circulate resume, so that we can take a look at the qualifications before we vote on these things? We have, I don't think there's no.
Oh, not tonight.
No, there's not tonight. You just move forward. Is that something all the other members with the public? We appreciate.
Please.
Yes. Thank you. Item number eleven.
And do we need, we need a vote for the Raymond Decker from the youth commission?
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Thank you. Item number eleven.
Item number eleven, resolution regarding authorization, Mayor Kenneth B. Cocaine to sign Connecticut DOT agreement, master municipal agreement for design projects, and there is a resolution treaty, it's just.
Okay, the resolution.
I'll read it. Be it resolved that the Honorable Kenneth B. Cocaine mayor is hereby authorized to sign the Connecticut Department of Transportation agreement entitled Master Municipal Agreement for Design Projects.
And just the next line, request the corporation council to review the agreement.
Request corporation council to review the agreement for compliance with the city's ordinances and regulations.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Motion seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote call, starting from front.
Yes.
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 Yes. Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number twelve.
Word of contract two, C seventeen-nine, sanitary sewer replaced on Bunshausen Avenue and Bartholomew Street to BMW Paving and Landscaping LLC, $237,000, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any documents necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion seconded, discussion. Is that a local company there?
No, it's not. Waterford.
There you go. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion passes. Item thirteen.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application up to $10,000 to Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for federal fiscal year 2016, Emergency Management Performance Grant for Emergency Management, Planning and Response Functions, and there is a resolution treaty.
Hereby resolved by the city council of the city of Bristol, Connecticut, complying with a grant application of up to $10,000 to the state Connecticut Department of Emergency Services, and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the first federal fiscal year 2015, Emergency Management Performance Grant funding is hereby approved, that the Mayor Kenneth B. Cocaine or acting mayor is hereby authorized to enter into, deliver, and execute such application in any or all documents relating to this application grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents to do or perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out in terms of the application slash grant. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the board of finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Resolution standing right far left.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item fourteen.
Resolution regarding acceptance grant from Thomaston Savings Bank Foundation for $1,350 to support ongoing reclamation activities by the city cemetery commission.
I can read the resolution. Be it hereby resolved that the city council of the city of Bristol, Connecticut, that the acceptance of a grant from the Thomaston Savings Bank Foundation in the amount of $1,350 to support the ongoing reclamation activities by the cemetery commission is hereby approved, and that the Mayor Kenneth B. Cocaine or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this program, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and to ratify and previously, any previously executed documents. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the board of finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Resolution standing right far.
It's a resolution.
Standing right far right.
Yes.
Yes, your honor.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item fifteen.
To discuss and take action on the matter of Gloria Day Evangelical Lutheran Church Incorporated versus the widows, heirs, and signs, and/or predators of Oliver H. Robertson, John L. Robertson, and Olay W. Robertson, and all unknown persons of the city of Bristol and the town of Plainville, docket number HHB CB sixteen, six oh three, two five 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 F. And councilman Damato has?
Yeah, second time's a charm. Motion hereby move the city of Bristol interim to a judgment by stipulation in the matter of Gloria Day Evangelical Lutheran Church Incorporated versus the widows, heirs, assines, and/or predators of Oliver H. Robertson et al., superior to our docket number HHB CB sixteen, six zero three two five 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 F, and that the corporation council be authorized to execute said stipulation on behalf of the city of Bristol.
Second. Motion seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Item sixteen.
Resolution regarding approval of grant application and contract with the Connecticut State Library for a $5,000 historic documents preservation grant for a land record conversion